Good morning. We're going to call this hearing on the Committee on Agriculture to Order regarding the Importance of Trade in U.S. Agriculture. Please come to order. I've asked David Scott if he would open us with a prayer. David?
First of all, thank you. Thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us. Blessings somehow, some way, dear God, that oftentimes we did not know how, or where, or what to ask for, but we thank you for your Holy Spirit that intercedes on our behalf with words that are often unheard. Dear God, as we, as your public servants, go forth in our duty to represent the people of our great nation, we simply ask you to bestow in our hearts for us to do the things the right way with the right things, those things that your angels desire to look into. These and other blessings we ask in your Son, Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, David. I want to start by welcoming our witnesses today and thanking them for taking time out of their schedules to come share their thoughts with us today. As others in the room are aware, America's farmers and ranchers are the most productive in the world. They have continuously proven their ability to meet rapidly growing and ever-changing demands here at home, but their reach stretches well beyond the U.S. border. In fact, exports now account for almost a third of total U.S. farm income. In the case of commodities like cotton, tree nuts, rice, wheat, over half of total production is exported. Beyond the obvious benefits to producers, trade also helps support almost 1 million American jobs in production agriculture and in related sectors like fruit processing and transportation. As a result, it's crucial, not only for American agriculture, but to the American economy as a whole, to maintain and increase access to the world's consumers, the 95% of whom live outside our borders. To obtain that access, it's imperative that we work to reduce and eliminate international barriers to trade so that our farmers and ranchers can compete globally on a level playing field. On that front, the U.S. is currently engaged in negotiations for the Trans-Pacific Partnership and the Transatlantic Trade and Investment Partnership. These agreements present opportunities for market access throughout Europe and Asia and the Asia-Pacific region. TPP, for example, would connect 12 nations that account for almost 40% of global GDP. But as history has shown in one form or another, Trade Promotion Authority has played a critical role in completing and implementing past agreements. In fact, Congress has granted TPA to every president since 1974, and the 114th Congress should be no exception. TPA will provide our negotiators with the credibility necessary to conduct the most effective trade agreement possible by making it clear to the rest of the world that Congress and administration are serious about this endeavor. That being said, the details of these agreements are of utmost importance. This committee will do its part to ensure they are favorable to U.S. agriculture. At the end of the day, even with TPA in place, it is Congress who decides if trade agreements will be ratified, but passing TPA is an essential part of getting to that point. So I look forward to hearing from our witnesses today about the role that both trade and TPA play in maintaining a strong and vibrant rural economy. And with that, I recognize Ranking Member for his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for calling the hearing, and thanks to today's witnesses. And we all understand how important trade is to agriculture and that most of the people that eat in the world live outside of the United States, although a lot of them don't have a whole lot of money to buy anything. So we understand that it's important. But with regard to the Trade Promotion Authority and the TPP, you know, I've been visiting with Ambassador Froman considerable amount of time over some issues, and I'm not totally to the point where I've gotten all the answers that I need, so I'm kind of waiting to see where I'm going to end up on that. But what I'm concerned about is that we don't cause problems in this agreement like we did with NAFTA. You know, and obviously, some of them, you know, like the sugar thing, we knew was coming. But what a lot of people aren't focused on is what we did with poultry, eggs, and milk in Canada. You know, we basically let them keep their system up there. It's very profitable. There's some in the United States that would like to see that kind of a system in the U.S., but, you know, it's not going to happen. But so they have this system up there that limits the amount that they can produce, and their producers make a lot of money. You've got to have quota in order to do it, and it costs a fair amount to buy the quota. But what people haven't focused on is that when we started NAFTA, the Canadian ownership of our processing was not even on the radar screen. Now, the Canadian co-ops in Quebec, Agropor and Saputo, are the number one and number three owners of processing of dairy in the United States. And the reason for that is because they're making all this money, and they can't invest it in their own industry, and so they're invested in the U.S. I'm not sure that's what we intended, or I'm not sure that's a good thing. So, you know, we need to get that straightened out in this deal. The Canadians are going to be in this deal. We need to get that straightened out. There's other issues in Japan and Mexico as well. So I'm looking forward to the -- Ambassador Froman assures me that they're going to get started on doing this. We'll see. And we appreciate the people being here today to give us their point of view of how they think things are progressing with this agreement, and look forward to their testimony.
Well, thank you, Ranking Member. I'd like now to welcome our witnesses to the table. Mr. Bob Stolman. Bob, how you doing? With President of American Farm Bureau here in Washington, D.C. Dr. Howard Hill, National Pork Producers Council, Cambridge, Iowa. Mr. Pete Kappelman, National Milk Producers Federation, Two Rivers, Wisconsin. And Mr. Bob Gunther, Senior Vice President for Public Policy, United Fresh Produce Association, Washington. Gentlemen, thank you for being here this morning. And that -- Mr. Stolman, microphone's yours.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ranking Member Peterson, members of the committees, for holding today's hearing and for allowing Farm Bureau to come present our views on the importance of trade to U.S. agriculture. Farm Bureau strongly supports efforts to increase agricultural trade through comprehensive new trade agreements. America's farmers and ranchers exported more than $152 billion worth of farm goods last year, a testament to their own hard work and productivity, as well as the positive impacts of opening new markets around the globe. Agricultural exports have grown about 40% over the past five years, thanks to global economic growth and a parade of agreements that have lowered tariffs and expanded tariff rate quotas. However, the United States has not concluded a new trade agreement since 2011. A major reason for the slowdown is that Trade Promotion Authority expired in 2007. TPA allows U.S. trade negotiators to present our best deals to trade partners and receive our trade partners' best offers while all the while reserving Congress's right to a yea or nay vote on the final deal. New trade agreements cannot come soon enough. U.S. agricultural exports are projected to decline by as much as $9 billion this year. Some of that decrease is due to lower commodity prices, but it is also due to non-science-based restrictions on one product or another and high tariffs around the world. For America's farmers and ranchers to see continued export growth, we must pin deals that knock down those trade barriers, and giving the administration Trade Promotion Authority is necessary to reach those market-opening agreements. The U.S. should be planting seeds today for future growth in agriculture trade, and there are seeds that are ready to be planted. U.S. negotiators are working to conclude major regional trade talks with 11 other countries, including Japan, under the Trans-Pacific Partnership. Japan is already a significant market for U.S. agriculture. It promises to be an even more important market if we can remove the barriers and high tariffs on a number of agricultural products as they try to protect their agricultural production. Farm Bureau supports efforts to achieve a meaningful outcome from the TPP talks, meaning that all commodities are on the negotiating table, and the talks must not set up new barriers to U.S. exports. We also support efforts to increase agricultural trade with the countries of the European Union. The Transatlantic Trade and Investment Partnership, or TTIP, gives us the opportunity to remove longstanding barriers to conventionally raised beef, remove restrictions against U.S. poultry and pork, and remove non-science-based actions that limit U.S. goods produced through biotechnology. The EU is the world's largest import market for food and agricultural commodities and was once the top destination for U.S. agricultural exports. Today, it has fallen to number five on the list. If U.S. farmers and ranchers were able to compete on a fair and scientific basis, the EU once again could be a major growth market for us. The opportunity to resolve longstanding trade issues through TTIP is exciting for those who, like me, and I'm sure many of you, have been frustrated for far too long by the EU's use of the precautionary principle, geographic indications, and other restrictions to limit access to its markets. We don't know if these negotiations will succeed. There are tough issues, and again, longstanding issues that must be dealt with. There must be positive outcomes for all sides, but we need to plant these seeds of future trade, and Trade Promotion Authority is the soil that allows new trade agreements to grow. When Congress extends TPA to the administration, it also stipulates that U.S. trade negotiators must consult with congressional committees. Farm Bureau firmly believes this is vital to ensuring that Congress provides oversight on the conduct and outcomes of trade negotiations. This oversight role is bolstered by the ability of Congress to establish negotiating objectives for the administration. I will close by reiterating that passage of TPA is critical to achieving our trade goals. The certainty of having TPA in place ensures that U.S. negotiators have the leverage to obtain the best agreement possible. Agricultural exports have a real impact on real farmers and ranchers. They create demand for our crops, meat, and other products, and they help sustain billions of American jobs. Farm Bureau urges Congress to approve Trade Promotion Authority as a critical component for a successful trade policy agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity to highlight the benefits of trade to America's farmers and ranchers.
And we're stoned. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to appear here on behalf of NPPC, National Pork Producers Council. Since 1989, when the United States began using bilateral and regional trade agreements to open foreign markets, U.S. agriculture exports have nearly quadrupled in value and now stand at a record $150-plus billion. Exports in 2014 supported more than 1 million full-time jobs, and more than half of those jobs were created in the past 10 years. In 2014, agricultural trade surplus is estimated to be around $40 billion. Each and every one of the trade agreements that made these remarkable achievements possible were themselves made possible by the enactment of Trade Promotion Authority bills. This is why NPPC and virtually every other agricultural organization in the United States are in favor of Congress expeditiously moving TPA legislation. The key reason TPA is needed is so that the administration can conclude the TPP negotiations. TPP has the potential to be the highest standard, most economically significant regional free trade agreement ever negotiated, and the United States is largely driving the proverbial bus on the trade talks. It's critically important that the United States gets TPP correct. U.S. trade negotiators will have the final leverage they need to close the TPP negotiation when Congress passes TPA. It will allow the nations to cut their bottom-line negotiating position on TPP. But it gets better than that. Other nations already have lined up to come into the U.S.-led regional FTA. With the World Trade Organization, Doha, multilateral trade negotiation on life support, TPP clearly has the potential to become the de facto platform for future global trade expansion. If Congress does not pass TPA, the 11 TPP countries with which the United States is negotiating won't be empowered to get to a bottom-line position. Instead, it will signal to those TPP partners in the Asian Pacific region, which is the fastest-growing economic area in the world, and to the rest of the world that the United States is turning its back on the Asian Pacific region and that it's willing to allow other nations to write the rules of trade. There are a number of other FTA -- FTAs under negotiation in the Asian Pacific region that, if implemented, would undermine U.S. competitiveness in the region. Let me specifically talk about pork. The U.S. pork industry has benefited tremendously from trade agreements and expanded trade. As a result of trade agreements, exports have increased 1,550% in value and 1,268% in volume since 1989, the year the U.S. implemented the Free Trade Agreement with Canada and started opening international markets for value-added agricultural products. The United States pork industry, the number-one pork exporter in the world, now exports more pork to the 18 FTA partners than to the rest of the world. According to a study conducted at Iowa State University, U.S. pork exports support more than 147 U.S. jobs. The benefits from TPA are expected to exceed the benefits delivered in past trade deals, representing the words of ISU or Iowa State University economist Dr. Dermot Hayes, "The most important commercial opportunity ever for the U.S. pork industry." My friends in the beef and poultry sector also have benefited significantly from free trade agreements. The United States exports almost as much beef, pork, and poultry to the 18 nations in which we have FTAs as it does to the 148 nations in which we do not have FTAs. Additionally, the rate of trade growth is much faster to FTA nations than to non-FTA nations. Since 2000, pork, beef, and poultry meat exports to the 18 FTA countries increased by 273%, while exports to the 148 non-FTA countries increased by just 126%. In summary, the U.S. pork industry, U.S. agriculture, indeed, the entire U.S. economy needs TPA, and we need it soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Mr. Kappelman?
Good morning. Chairman Conway, Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the committee, thank you for inviting me today to testify on the vital importance of trade to the U.S. dairy industry. I'm a fourth-generation dairy producer from Two Rivers, Wisconsin, and I'm chairman of the National Milk Producers International Trade Committee. National Milk member cooperatives produce the majority of the milk in the United States, making National Milk the voice of more than 32,000 dairy farmers from across the country on national issues. I would also add that I'm a board member of the U.S. Dairy Export Council. National Milk coordinates closely with the Export Council, including its processor members, thereby helping the industry to speak with one voice on trade issues. In the past 15 years, U.S. dairy exports have grown by 625% to a record $7.1 billion. The same trend holds true when looking at export volumes as well. 15 years ago, we were exporting 5% of our milk production, and a portion of that was with the assistance of export subsidies or food aid donations. Today, we're exporting three times that level with no government support, even as overall U.S. milk production has continued to grow. That equates to one day's milk production each week that ultimately ends up overseas, making exports critical to the health of my farm and our industry. It's not at all coincidental that the enormous growth over this period occurred during a time in which the U.S. was implementing a number of new market-opening free trade agreements, each of which were concluded under and ultimately approved through the use of Trade Promotion Authority. These agreements removed tariff and often non-tariff barriers. In many cases, they also gave our products a preferential advantage over other supplying countries. In every case, our dairy exports to U.S. FTA partner countries have shown substantial and sometimes dramatic increases. The fact is that 96% of the world's population lives outside of our borders. That population is growing faster than ours, and that is where the output of our increasing dairy productivity must find a home. This means that for our farmers to continue to grow and for our processing companies to continue to expand, overseas markets are critical. As a producer myself, I know firsthand what this means to me and my bottom line. When our exports increase, I benefit. When, for whatever reason, our exports are impeded or we give up market shares, the effect is ultimately felt by the farmer in the price we receive. But it's not just dairy producers who are impacted. USDA estimates that each billion dollars of U.S. dairy exports generates 20,000 jobs in dairy processing and marketing. Therefore, our $7 billion of exports last year supported more than 140,000 incremental jobs here in the U.S. and generated nearly $20 billion in additional economic activity. When it comes to trade, those who stand still fall behind. Our competitors are negotiating trade agreements all over the globe. Unfair import barriers remain in place, and new ones are erected all the time. The TPA legislation introduced last year put a strong new priority on tackling non-tariff barriers, which have been cropping up much more lately, whether they take the form of SPS barriers or the abuse of geographical indications to impede U.S. exports. We hope to see those provisions replicated in this year's bill. The reality is that if we aren't in the game actively negotiating on these issues, we're ceding ground to our competitors and those looking to make it tougher for us to do business in their markets. A case in point is the TPP negotiations. Significant access to the TPP's most protected dairy markets, Japan and Canada, is absolutely essential to us, and both of those countries have pointed to the importance of having a TPA in place as these TPP talks enter their final stage. Our negotiators have moved the ball forward on many key issues, but more work still needs to be done. To deliver an agreement that delivers net trade benefits for the U.S. dairy industry, we need to have TPA in place to get there. The U.S. dairy industry is thinking globally and prepared to do what our customers want and need. What we need now is for Congress to move forward with TPA so that the administration can conclude high-quality trade agreements that preserve our ability to compete and deliver net trade benefits to the U.S. dairy industry. I appreciate this opportunity today to provide comments on the important issue of trade. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kappelman. Mr. Gunther, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes.
Yes, you did. All right. Five minutes.
Sure.
Thank you, Chairman Conway, and Ranking Member Peterson, for providing United Fresh Produce Association with the opportunity to share our perspective from the fresh fruit and vegetable sector about the importance of trade to our industry and to agriculture in general. Exports and imports are crucial to the viability of many of our member businesses, so we're very appreciative of having the chance to elaborate on why promoting trade is so important to U.S. agriculture. This hearing is particularly timely, given the ongoing debate within Congress regarding renewing Trade Promotion Authority and the U.S. efforts to negotiate trade deals such as the Trans-Pacific Partnership and the Transatlantic Trade and Investment Partnership. First, a bit of background about our organization. United Fresh Produce Association was founded in 1904, and we are the only trade association that oversees all segments of the fresh fruit and vegetable production chain across the United States. While most of our members are based here in the U.S., export and import markets are essential to our members as they seek to ensure business viability and meet consumer demand. As with all sectors of agriculture sectors represented here today, the export and import situation for fresh fruits and vegetables is constantly evolving. Recent information from the Economic Research Service at USDA forecasts fresh produce, fruit and vegetable exports for fiscal year 2015 with a value of nearly $8 billion. Export markets to key -- exports to key markets such as Canada, Europe, and Japan are expected to continue expanding. Where we have seen the most difference in recent years, however, is in the area of imports. It is worth noting that while fruit and vegetable exports have doubled since the mid-1990s, fruit and vegetable imports in the same time have nearly tripled. Factors that contribute to this include trade policies that do not address non-tariff trade barriers to U.S. exports of fruits and vegetables. We've experienced that. As tariff levels have been brought down, there have been corresponding increase in non-tariff barriers. Example of non-tariff barriers include, but are not limited to, restrictive import and administrative procedures or product or processing specifications. Exports of commodities such as apples, pears, peaches, citrus, and potatoes to countries including Korea and Mexico have been limited due to non-tariff barriers, among other examples. If we were to ensure that export and import levels are put back on an even keel, United Fresh urges Congress and the administration to ensure that any future trade deal creates new ways to break down these artificial barriers using sound science. We also urge the creation of a dispute settlement process that resolves non-tariff trade issues in a timely manner. We also know that promoting free trade can work for the fresh produce industry and have seen results from a variety of trade agreements. One recent example is the announcement earlier this year by USDA's Animal Plant Health Inspection Service that China has agreed to allow all apple varieties into the Chinese market, which is its largest destination for U.S. agricultural products. This announcement was a culmination of a sustained effort by a coalition of apple industry organizations and provides apple growers with comprehensive access to this major market for the first time. But there are certainly other examples of how fresh produce industry could benefit significantly from enhanced trade opportunities. For example, the National Potato Council estimates that the adoption of the Trans-Pacific Partnership Trade Agreement could increase fresh potato exports to Mexico by nearly $150 million a year, up from the current level of $39 million a year. The fresh produce industry knows that we must continue to be vocal about the need to improve trade relations and policies, but as members of the produce industry must do what they can to be ready to take advantage of business opportunities in foreign markets, Congress and administration need to do more. It is essential that the President and Congress have the necessary authority to promote robust trade policies that maintain current opportunities and, as in the case of fruits and vegetables, ensures trade equilibrium. United Fresh believes it is in agriculture's best interest for Congress to expeditiously enact TPA. Such action would allow these critical trade deals to move forward and provide producers with much-needed tools in their efforts to be successful in the marketplace. In conclusion, I'd like to once again thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ranking Member Peterson, as well as the entire committee for all you've done to ensure fresh fruit and vegetable producers have trade opportunities, as well as the tools to address a multitude of trade challenges. To build on the good work that you have done -- been done by you, United Fresh urges Congress and the entire Congress to support Trade Promotion Authority to maximize trade opportunities for America's agricultural producers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gunther. Appreciate it. Appreciate all of your presentations. I'll remind members that they'll be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in the order of their arrival, and I appreciate the members' understanding. With that, I recognize myself for five minutes. Again, thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Mr. Stolman, you mentioned in your conversation with us about certain uncertainties with respect to TTIP and the things that are going on. There are those who oppose TPA that are using those uncertainties as a reason to shy away from passing TPA. Can you respond to that, to their arguments or their conversation?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would argue just the opposite. I think you have a lot more certainty on a couple of fronts if you have TPA in terms of completing a successful negotiation. You know, first, the Congress gets to define what they want in terms of a consultative role, in terms -- they get to define what they'd like to see in terms of negotiating objectives. That provides more certainty from a policy perspective. But even more importantly, during the negotiations, and a negotiation is a continuum. It goes, you know, a long time, like any other negotiation, back and forth, offers, counteroffers. But countries aren't going to put their best offers on the table unless they have a certainty or feel like they have a certainty that the U.S. is committed to completing the negotiation and the trade agreement. And so the certainty of having a good agreement is certainly enhanced, I believe, by having Trade Promotion Authority in place.
All right. Thank you. All four of you, this question is, any of you want to take it on, have mentioned in one form or the other the importance of passing TPA. Can you comment about what the impact would be if we don't pass a TPA for any of the
Well, I think, as I pointed out in my comments, that if we don't pass TPA, the likelihood of passing TPP is dramatically reduced, and if that happens, I think other countries in the Asian region will do bilateral agreements and multilateral agreements, and we will be left out. And it'll put us, not only the pork industry, but all of agriculture and our whole economy at a great disadvantage as far as being able to trade with those countries, those Asian-Pacific countries.
Well, I mean, I would say personally, it does not allow our negotiators the strongest possible tools to be able to negotiate a strong trade agreement that can be the best benefit for our members in the fresh produce industry. As I mentioned before, you know, these issues related to non-tariff trade barriers are extremely important that we bring these down because they are the major reason preventing increased exports for fruits and vegetables around the world. And without having TPA, it does not put our negotiators in a position to be able to strongly negotiate with their counterparts in that area as well.
I would agree with all the comments. Case in point, when we did the Free Trade Agreement with Korea, we were put in the driver's seat because we were first. As we are standing still and not signing new agreements, we're put in a less advantageous position.
position.
Well, I certainly concur with my colleagues here at the table. Not having TPA is going to cause the U.S. to be left out of trade negotiations to a great extent. We may engage in trade negotiations, but completing successful negotiations will be extremely difficult, if not impossible, without having TPA because the other countries are going to believe we're not serious about a trade agenda, and it's very important that that's a component of the discussion as you go into doing the tough negotiation it takes to get a good deal.
The TPA basically allows for an up or down vote on the agreement that was made. If I'm a country of the United States and I'm looking at 535 additional negotiators without TPA, is that an impact? In other words, if our trade reps trying to do a deal and the people on the other side know that that deal has to come from Congress and we can amend it, change it, are you more likely to make a deal with our TPA, our trade guy, without TPA?
If I were sitting across the table, I wouldn't do it. And let me give you Japan as an example. They're trying to reform their agricultural sector to rationalize it, and in the process, they know that they're going to have to create greater access to their markets, but those are very politically difficult decisions. What elected leader in Japan is going to take those politically difficult decisions, take all the heat from that, and then with the prospect of the agreement coming back over here after they've laid it on the table and being basically chopped up by a menland and turned into something that is unacceptable?
All right. Thanks, gentlemen. With that, I recognize Ranking Member for five minutes. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Capelman, do you -- what are the -- are we still in the situation where our dairy stuff going to Canada has -- still has tariffs on it?
Well, actually, yeah. I mean, there's -- if you look at some of the numbers, it'll show that there's quite a bit of product moving to Canada, but that's actually under a processing agreement where it moves, comes right back. So that's where some of those -- there's actually very little product going into Canada because they were, I guess, excluded. Dairy was excluded in NAFTA.
Right. So, but coming this way, there's basically no tariffs on the Canadian coming this way.
Exactly.
And so, you know, that's been one of my real birds in my saddle over the NAFTA agreement, you know? And whether, you know, politically they're going to be able to move the Canadians, you know, where they need to go, I don't know. But it is, you know, I'm right, I'm not that the -- these Canadian co-ops are buying up -- I think they just bought DeVisco in Minnesota here a few months ago, and I think one of them is now the number-one processor in the U.S. from the information that I've gotten.
Yeah, in my neighborhood, I have two Canadian-owned facilities, one by a co-op and one by proprietary, Agri-Pure and Saputo. And I think it's interesting because if I were on -- in Canada's dairy -- if I were a Canadian dairy producer, they're thinking totally defensive, and they need to think a little bit offensively because they have tremendous opportunity to produce milk. Their processors want to grow their industry. And yet, they said they want to come to the table or play the game with TPP, but on dairy, they're standing on the sideline. They haven't put on a uniform yet. So we would be very, very hesitant to support TPP if Canada cannot table anything on dairy.
So your position is that something has to be done?
Absolutely.
And Stallman, you're a rice farmer, right? So Mr. Froman has told me that he thinks they're going to get some access for rice in Japan. Do you think that's realistic?
I believe they will get some additional access. Rice is the most sensitive product in Japan and protected the most. There's no question about it.
Some additional access? What does that mean?
More than we have now. And actually, if we can get more than we have now, that would be a start in that effort.
Yeah. Well, that's my concern, that we end -- that we need to make some progress in Japan. We need to make progress in Mexico for sure, in these supply-managed areas. And, you know, having watched the NAFTA situation, you know, and the side agreements and how they weren't enforced and so forth, I'm concerned about where we would end up, you know, at the end of the day. Are we going to get traded off for auto manufacturing or whatever, you know? So I -- what I've been looking for is some pretty good assurance that we're going to make progress in those areas because I am skeptical, having met with Canadians and Japanese. I don't know. I mean, I hope that we can give movement, but I'm skeptical. I guess that's my main point, and I yield back.
Chairman yields back. Mr. Dejolay for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks to our panel. It was a great hearing today. I represent Tennessee's 4th Congressional District, and it happens to be home of the largest farm bureau in the nation. Mr. Stallman, I'm sure you know Lacy Upchurch and Joe Pearson. They were up to visit a couple of weeks ago and asked to send their regards to you. Like many other individuals here, I come from a rural area with a largely agricultural-based economy, and just literally over the past week or two, we've been visited by Tyson Foods, soybean growers. I was in and visited with McKee Bakery, makers of products like Little Debbie. They're interested in sugar trade. Charles Ward, the Cattlemen's Association, has been in contact with me. So great interest from our state in regards to today's topic. And, you know, the farmers and ranchers everywhere I go have been very outspoken in their support of the commercial opportunities that this trade deal presents, especially regarding the potential increase in access to the Japanese markets. Mr. Stallman, I believe you stated in your testimony that U.S. agriculture exports to Japan exceeded $13.4 billion in 2014. This despite Japan's high tariffs and restrictive policies that inhibit U.S. exports. What outcomes do you or anyone else on the panel foresee in the negotiation with Japan in regards to overcoming these trade barriers?
Well, some economists are basically saying that our growth in agricultural exports, that if we have a successful TPP agreement, that 70% of our ag export gains will be in the Japan market, and because it's a high-value market, they have a very strong economy. And when you talk about the meat sector particularly, that makes a big difference. And they have protected those industries with high tariffs and import restrictions for so long, and now they're trying to figure out a way to engage in the negotiations and provide some offers that are meaningful. If all that occurs, and, you know, it remains to be seen, but I think we're on the right path, if all that occurs, that could be a huge increase for the U.S. ag export market, and they could move up the list. They're number four now, but they could move up the list to be an even larger exporter -- importer of our products, of our exports.
Okay. Does anyone else on the panel have a comment?
Yeah, of that $13 billion you referred to, over $2 billion of that was pork. And as you know, when these negotiations got started, Japan really just wanted to throw us a bone, which we didn't accept, and we, I guess you could say, we raised Cain about it. And I think, to the credit of our trade negotiators, I think there's been a lot of progress made. We reserve the right to see what the final outcome is, but we're confident that we will not get a deal, a TPP deal, if we don't have TPA. And I know Congressman Peterson's gone. He had another meeting. But, you know, when we use the word "negotiation," that's what it means, negotiating. We can't fix everything. We have to negotiate, and I agree, we need a better deal with Canada. But I hope we don't hold the negotiations and hold one issue up and miss the big picture here when we try to get TPA and TPP passed because it is a huge, huge opportunity for the U.S. economy.
Okay. Mr. Capelman or Mr. Gunther, did you have anything to add?
Yes, I would. In regards to Japan, first of all, I agree with that TPA is going to be absolutely critical because we have little -- very little access to Japan, limited TRQs. They have a fairly substantial dairy industry, but every country really protects their dairy industry. They want milk for their kids. And we understand that, but at the same time, their administration knows their farming population is aging and that land has other uses, and the administration, we believe, wants to open the door, start opening the door. And -- but they can't lay all their cards out if they know they're going to get left high and dry, and that's where TPA really comes in.
Okay. Well, gentlemen, I thank you all for your comments, and, Mr. Chairman, I yield back the balance of my time. Chairman yields back. Mr. Scott for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me first start off with dairy. Could you tell us, who are the largest countries that are exporters of dairy into the United States?
Well, I would say that the top five -- in the top five is number one, New Zealand. New Zealand, and it's no surprise, they export over 90% of their production. New Zealand's industry, by the way, is only about as large as California's dairy industry. So they export a lot. We see them as a giant because it's most of their production. So they have about $750 million of exports to the U.S. And then we have from Europe. It's mostly specialty cheeses coming from European countries.
All right. Let me ask you, then, do you see any reason for us to be concerned that TPP may provide these countries with greater access to the United States market and therefore having some downward pressure on our own industry in this country?
Oh, that's the worry because with TPP, we have, in those 12 nations, we have dairy's biggest opportunities in Japan and Canada, and we have dairy's biggest threat, which might be New Zealand. And that's why when we're opening the doors to trade, you know, you might open the door in your house and let the cat out, but sometimes a dog will come in. So I think it's important -- we're -- 15 years ago, this dairy industry in the U.S. was intimidated by global trade. We're not anymore. We can compete. We can compete at a high level, but on a fair -- on a level playing field. So that's why getting this good agreement in TPP is important. We're willing to compete, but we need access in exchange.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I yield back the balance of time.
Chairman yields back. Mr. Lamoffa for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot of talk about Japan here and concern about how they will act. Is there -- for everybody on the panel, probably start with Mr. Gunther, please, but, you know, with the access we've been looking for, for rice, pork, beef, wheat, and dairy, do you see that the opportunities are really going to open up ongoing? Is it going to be a true negotiation that results in significant tangible new markets for our American products?
Well, I can speak for pork. The answer is absolutely yes. And I think we could say that for a lot of our other industries, particularly in agriculture. You know, we typically develop new technology, adopt new technology, and become the most efficient producers in the world of agricultural products. So as was just pointed out, you know, there's no fear that we can't compete and be low-cost, efficient producers. So I would say that the potential is, again, huge for not only pork, but agricultural products and for other products that we produce in the United States.
Yeah, I would agree with those comments. I think that when you look at the robust economy of the Japan economy, that, you know, the potential for increased access for fruits and vegetables is there, and we certainly want to continue to push forward in that way.
Mr. Stallman?
Well, absolutely. I think there's great promise in the TPP negotiations with Japan, as you referenced, but also we've talked about Canada. You know, both highly-developed countries, citizens with good incomes, good appetites, and as competitor -- as a very -- as the world's greatest competitor in the agricultural sector, we can get our products in there as long as the playing field is level. But until we have TPA and we can complete the negotiation, we can't get to that point where the playing field will be leveled sufficiently to allow additional exports into those markets.
Well, speaking rice, just for an additional minute here, how much rice do you think is sitting in cold storage in Japan right now?
There's probably some. There has been ever since they were required to take the quota. And, you know, rice is a difficult subject. Number one, most of U.S. rice is not of the type that Japanese eat. California has the opportunity to provide some that they do. And so our goal has always been to try to expand those quotas as much as we can to get rice in because, you know, once you get in, establish a market, and more importantly, hopefully get their consumers a choice, give their consumers a choice about what products they're able to buy, and let them try other rice from other countries, that, you know, eventually we can expand that. They're going to have to rationalize their whole protection and subsidy system over there before we can make great inroads, but they're in the process of doing that. So it's slow, but we are making progress, and directionally, it's correct, and I think we need to expedite that process with a successful conclusion for TPP.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you with our remaining -- oh, sir.
Yeah, could I just follow up by pointing out that, you know, when we trade with foreign countries, a lot of times we're trading, I'll take the pig as an example, we trade parts of that pig that are not valued in our domestic market. In the U.S., we value the muscle meats, the bacons, the loins, shoulders, but we export all the parts of the pig that we don't value to these foreign markets where they are sometimes considered delicacies, and we get higher value for them than we do for the muscle cuts. Same in the poultry industry. I mean, if you go to China, you eat chicken feet, you know? I don't think they serve very many of those in the United States. It's estimated that the offal and these snouts and feet and tails and all that come off of that pig that we export adds almost $9 to every pig that we raise in the United States. So it's very, very -- that's a very, very important market for us.
Okay. Mr. Capelman? And just comment if you wish, but...
Yeah, and so I think that, first of all, I think that Canada is, you know, Japan, we think we're starting to make some progress. I already referred to Japan, but Canada is obviously a prime market for us. They're right there. They escaped -- their dairy segment escaped the first time with NAFTA, and we have to make sure that with TPP, that doesn't happen again.
Yeah, it seems the U.S. is what absorbs most of that trade deficit, and we have to be better next time around.
Chairman, time should expire. Mrs. Adams for five minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Agriculture is very important to North Carolina. It's an important industry for our state that must be supported through policies and that promote good job growth. But in North Carolina, we still remember the more than 200,000 jobs that were lost in state from NAFTA. Job losses were certified under the Trade Agreement Assistance Programs as lost to offshoring or imports since NAFTA. So any new agreements must carefully be considered in order to ensure that our workers will see an improvement in their livelihoods. Mr. Hill, my question to you, I was looking at the graphs in your testimony. They show the volume of pork exports has overall increased since 1989. Does the data that you show here, does this data show if the growth in exports came from new markets or simply from increased demand by countries that were already trading with the U.S.?
Most of that increase in exports is the result of free trade agreements with now 18 different countries. We trade -- we send more pork to those 18 countries with free trade agreements than we do the other 148 countries that we do business with. So it just shows the importance of free trade agreements, in my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Gunther, North Carolina is a growing state for specialty crops. How will supporting TPP promote opportunities for growers in our state?
Well, as we've mentioned before, I think, you know, having the ability to increase different market opportunities for different products and specialty crops and fruits and vegetables in particular is going to
and vegetables in particular is going to be critical. And TPP allows that opportunity because that is such a robust market, potential market for fresh produce in terms of commodities that are available there, or can be available there. So that's one reason why we're very supportive of the effort.
Okay. To follow up, what is your understanding of the TPP's rapid settlement mechanism, and are you concerned that other countries could use this provision to undermine U.S. laws?
I'm not familiar with that at this point in time, but we can certainly get you an answer for that.
All right. I would appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Yeah, gentleman yields back. Ms. Crawford for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, I appreciate you being here today. I want to start with Mr. Stallman. I'm concerned about some of the things that our trading partners do to get around their obligations without triggering WTO enforcement remedies. I'll give you an example. Obviously, we know that China is subsidizing cotton at levels that manipulate global prices. And there's just not a whole lot we can do about that. Do you think TPA should include some provisions that strengthen the enforcement remedies under our trade laws to make sure that U.S. industries have some recourse when our trading partners evade their trade obligations?
Well, general principle, all trade agreements should have enforcement mechanisms. Otherwise, you know, the terms are fairly meaningless. And what we've always asked for are for those enforcement mechanisms to be transparent, to be timely. Those two main items, which in many cases with current dispute settlement procedures, that's not the case. And so we always want to see those in the trade agreements as we get them. And that certainly has been one of the negotiating objectives.
We've had about a 40% decline in cotton acres in my district. I don't know if that is consistent with, you know, nationwide cotton acres, but I'm sure that what's going on in China has a large impact on our planning decisions in my district in Arkansas. Let me go sort of expand on an issue that Congressman Lamapha addressed, and that is with regard to rice. I know that American Farm Bureau Federation is an advocate for all production agriculture. The South Korea Free Trade Agreement, the rice industry was somewhat excluded. I know there's some cultural sensitivities with regard to rice. You addressed that as it applies to Japan with regard to the short grain market that they have, whereas we do produce a lot of long grain, medium grain, certainly in my part of the country. But I'm concerned that rice could possibly be left out again in the TPA or become somewhat of a sticking point. What position will American Farm Bureau Federation take if that should happen, or with any other commodity for that matter?
Well, since American Farm Bureau Federation is a general farm organization, so we strongly support the negotiations, but we reserve the right to do an economic analysis of those negotiations once they're completed to determine their impact on American agriculture. We obviously analyze the impact on various commodities, but at the end of the day, the impact has to be positive overall for American agriculture for us to support the final agreement. That's been an operational policy of ours for well over a decade now. And so to get to the crux of the question, we seek gains for all commodities, and we want our negotiators to strongly pursue those. But at the end of the day, we have to look at what the overall impact of the trade agreement is, you know, before we decide whether to support it or not.
Appreciate that. You know, my concern is that, as was the case in Korea, I think that the rice industry was saying, we're going to take one for the team to get this deal done, with the long-term vision being that it's important for us to do this in order for the next step to take place with TPP.
I think we have made the strong point to the administration, to our negotiators, that we didn't want to see a repeat necessarily as to what happened in South Korea, that, you know, Japan should reform its protected agricultural sector. Part of that reform should be to allow products in from, for those sensitive products, and rice is certainly one of those. And so I think we're going to, as I already said, I think we will get some additional access, how much I think is still on the negotiating table.
Okay. And then last point, have we resolved the yarn-forward issue with Vietnam that may have been a problem there as far as TPA is concerned, or do you not see that being a problem?
I don't know the answer to that question. I do not know.
Okay. All right. Yield back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman yields back. Ms. Plaskett for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, gentlemen. I had a great interest in the discussion you were having in particular, Mr. Gunther, about fresh fruit and vegetables. Coming from the Virgin Islands, that's a product that we hold very dear and are interested in increasing in exports. You talked about TPP and the impediments that non-tariff trade barriers had. I know that some of those include restrictive import and administrative procedures, but what are some of, can you give us examples of how this has been a difficulty for that area?
Yeah, usually when we talk about things like this, these are really pest or disease-type barriers that are happening, where they're phytosanitary-type issues. So I think that, you know, where you can see things related to that is when you're looking at these types of kind of, you know, decisions that are made that are based on, you know, potential problems that may or may not be in the, in the, in the, in terms of the barriers, but also in terms of trying to kind of, what is the best process to address these barriers? And whether it's bringing people here to the U.S. to address them in terms of science and understanding what's happening here, in terms of protocols, or the other way around, in terms of other countries coming here, bringing a product here to the United States. You know, we've got to make sure that these processes related to whether they're phytosanitary, pest trade, pest and disease-type issues are addressed in the most scientific way, that we're ensuring that there's not a, you know, evasiveness in terms of bringing them in here in the United States.
So would that not be an impediment to imports coming into this country as opposed to export?
It goes both ways. Yes, ma'am.
And are they more restrictive in the import market, or?
I would say that certainly when you, I think we, both sides of a negotiation in terms of countries trying to bring product here into the United States and us getting access to other countries, there are certain protocols that each country has that allows that process to come, you know, to move forward. I think that when you look at the, in terms of the, you know, the way that we have seen imports come here to the United States, that, you know, we feel very strongly that our process is working, that, but also we need to have access to other countries as well.
So if it works both ways, I'm just trying to understand why our numbers, the American exports, have not grown as quickly as the imports coming in here? If theirs have tripled and we have the same restrictions based on pests, then it has to be some other impediment, right, or a barrier? Is it the process, administrative process?
There's some of it's tariff barriers, okay? So the tariff barriers have come down here in the United States.
When you say tariff barriers, what do you mean specifically that's causing that?
Basically, those are trade agreements that have happened over the past. NAFTA, for instance, trade agreements with Chile, Peru, you know, major countries that we have imports in. So those tariffs have, they've come down. We've not seen reciprocal barriers come down in terms of those areas, in those countries as well. So I think that's one area we've got to look at, but also the continued non-tariff trade barriers, as I mentioned in my testimony, of exports into countries that are not tariff-based.
How much of it is based on consumer demand?
A lot of it is based on consumer demand as well. It's a very good point to point out, because what we've seen here in this country is we now are, have a consumer demand of year-round supplies of products. So the counter-seasonal issues that related to that, where we're not producing certain commodities here in this country and other countries can provide that, is an important area as well, that we've seen increases of imports.
And what countries do you find is the greatest opportunities for us exporting?
I think we continue to see, you know, the Asian communities, European communities as well, and so when we look at these trade agreements that we're currently looking at, Mexico and Canada continue to be a viable market as well for our exports. We continue to try to increase access there because they're the trading partners.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I yield the balance of my time.
Gentleman lady yields back. The gentleman from Michigan is recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, gentlemen. I appreciate you being here. I represent the northern half of Michigan, so I work with our Michigan Farm Bureau. And Mr. Kappelmann, I'm a Packer fan, so I know you live near Green Bay. And we produce in northern Michigan, you know, quite varied products through the, you know, throughout my district especially. And I've been listening to the debate here. I'm a surgeon, I'm not a farmer, and I know how important this trade is. You've all been advocating for it, and, you know, it all sounds good, but I do have a few specific questions that I'd like to ask. Mr. Gunther, you know, we produce a lot of fruit and vegetables in northern Michigan. What are the particular, particular to fruit and vegetables, which we do a lot of great stuff in Michigan, apples, cherries, as you probably know? Can you give me just a brief, how is the free trade agreement specific for those commodities going to help us in Michigan?
Well, I think when you look at the export opportunities, especially for apples and cherries, you know, the Asian market in particular are going to be very beneficial. And I think those are important areas that we can focus on. I think, you know, those are areas I think we're really going to try to spend a lot of time on in terms of increasing access to those areas.
Mr. Kappelmann, I had, something came up which I wasn't really aware of. The ranking member mentioned that the Canadian NAFTA agreement excluded the dairy situation, and then he was concerned about, you know, their dairy industry becoming, you know, pretty strong, and we're not able to compete with them very well. So how, what is the input to the negotiators? I mean, how does this happen, that here's the major, where is the American milk producers involved with the NAFTA agreement? I mean, how does this happen where, I mean, I'm just asking?
Well, I was in high school at the time.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, but I mean, how does this happen where, you know, we're talking about negotiating free trade agreements that are fair, and it all sounds positive, but then there's this, there's this thing happened that not all that positive. So what happens then? Do you have input to that process?
I understand that issue goes back to the original Canada-U.S. free trade agreement, which was a predecessor to NAFTA, and dairy was left out of that. And so I think then they left dairy out of NAFTA again. And, you know, it goes back to their quota system. They put up really tall walls around their dairy industry, and they're really trying to protect it, and they just are standing by their producers.
Mr. Stallman, what is the input that the industry has to the negotiations? The administration has given negotiating this trade authority, right? So how do you, how do they know your interest? What is the communication process there?
Well, there are a variety of ways, and I'm going to just speak about what we do in Farm Bureau, because our colleagues in the other commodity groups do the same thing. There are trade advisory committees that advise our negotiators directly. We, as long as our, as well as our colleagues, have very direct discussions and consultations.
Does this happen in real time?
Yes.
Yes, real time.
I mean, you know, there are those of us that, at least those of us who have security clearances, we get real-time phone calls from our negotiators if issues are coming up, that they want to have input on. We provide input ahead of time about the things we would like to see. So I feel like we have a great deal of input.
Well, you know, Michigan not only has a great agriculture industry, it has a, you know, an automotive industry as well. And, you know, we were talking about Japan a little bit, and we, I want to see our stuff being able to be sold in Japan, our act stuff, but also our car stuff, you know. So it concerns me that there's, you know, talking about one sector or the other maybe having favorability in the agreement. You know, I want to support an agreement because I believe in free trade, but I want to have a fair deal too. So I'm just trying to find out, you know, how this all works better so I can support both those industries in my state, and not have one, you know, agree to one and then ditch the other, you know, like it happened with the milk guys. So is there, do we all have input to that? Anybody been familiar with any of these agreements personally?
I would say that everybody has the opportunity for input. Some organizations, some groups are more active than others. We've been very active. The pork industry's been very active. I don't know if you're aware, but you're, in your state, they just announced that there's going to be a new packing plant. I'm not sure if it's in your district or not, but it's partially owned by producers, and they'll be slaughtering pigs, and they'll want to export product from that facility in the international market.
Yeah, gentleman's time has expired. Mr. Costa for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank Representative Costa for allowing me to. I have an appointment I need to go to. Gentlemen, I appreciate your testimony, and these two trade agreements, both with the, our Asian trading partners and our Europeans, I think are both very important to the country as a whole, but also to American agriculture. A lot of detail, not a lot of time to ask questions. I'll submit some later on, and I'd hope to get a written response. We have both the tariff and the non-tariff barriers that we're dealing with in agriculture. I'd like to quickly ask each of you, which do you think are of greatest concern to you, the tariff or the non-tariff barriers as it relates to agriculture? But I know there are two different negotiations, set of negotiations going on.
I think it depends, it depends on the market. That varies by market.
Right, and commodity.
And commodity. In general, we knew that when the Uruguay round was completed and there were reductions in tariffs, everyone suspected that the non-tariff barriers would rise to the forefront as being some of the strongest impediments to increased imports, and that has happened. You know, I would suggest that the EU at this point, in terms of non-scientific-based trade barriers, is probably one of the main struggles that we face in agriculture.
Right. And we're stressing best use of science. They've made some progress on GMOs. Obviously, we're still having difficulty with the chlorine beaching on poultry as an example, but yet they use it on fresh fruit and vegetable products, which is inconsistent, I think. And then, of course, the naming rights, which are, I mean, I think, I love Parmesan, but I mean, whether Parmesan is made in California or whether it's made in Italy, it's still Parmesan. I mean, that's like name branding pizza, it seems to me. But these are issues we've got to work for. Does some of the other, of the three of you would like to make a comment?
Well, I'd say that removing the tariffs or lowering tariffs is probably key to getting into those markets, but the SPS issues are equally important, and those are what come back to haunt us later. And that's why the SPS chapter in TPP is so important, because it'll strengthen the enforcement.
Mr. Stallman said he thought they were getting good access in this process. How about yourself? In terms of negotiations?
Oh, I think we've had, we've had very good input. We've worked closely with the TP, or the trade.
Mr. Kappelmann? I'm just because of my time.
Yeah, so I'm going to say that, first of all, for us, with TPP, access, increased TRQs with Canada and Japan, or lower tariff, but then as, then the non-tariff, non-tariff barrier can come in.
Well, and some of our trading partners like to play it both ways, as we know.
Right, yeah, so we've got to be ready for both.
Yeah, Mr. Gunther.
I think, you know, as tariffs continue to come down on fresh fruits and vegetables, the non-tariff trade barriers are the ones that are probably most critical to success of equilibrium and of trade for fresh fruits and vegetables.
Do any of you care to comment on the fact, and some of the opposition, obviously, is coming from the area of promotional trade authority? You know, when you look at the history, I don't know how we pass a major trade agreement unless we have some version of promotional trade authority. What's your view on that? I mean, do you think we could have these two trade agreements with, I don't know, shall we say, an open rule on the House floor? I mean, give me your thoughts.
I think it will be virtually impossible to complete and sign off on trade agreements without trade promotion already.
I would agree. Yes, also.
Yes. Dr. Hill, do you have any further points you'd like to make on the issue of the geographical indicator issues?
Of the what issues?
Geographical indicator issues, like Parmesan, like I mentioned a moment ago.
No.
Okay. Mr. Gunther, the, beyond the various federal programs that you mentioned in your testimony, obviously specialty crops are not only big in California but elsewhere throughout the country. Are there other things that you think we should be looking at as it relates to these negotiations that would, not only for California, but for other states that are engaged in your products that we can pursue?
Well, I think that certainly, you know, making sure that, you know, we have increased access, you know, you're talking about 300 different commodities. access, you know, you're talking about 300 different commodities grown here in the United States.
Right.
And it's very difficult to balance out all that when you're talking about trade agreements, so that's why we think TPA is a very important, you know, component or tool for the Congress. But what I would say in terms of that is that we need to make sure that these trade barriers, I continue to go back to that, are, we have a fair, good, scientific, and expeditious process when these come up, that is, that is consistent, because that's what they're getting when they come here to the US.
All right, my time's expired, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much. The question I'm going to send to you is, what happens if we don't have a trade agreement? I.e. the status quo, I think we need to look at that as well, thank you.
Gentleman's time has expired, Ms. Newhouse, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all four for being here this morning. From Washington State, one of the most trade-reliant states in the country, so this is a very important topic for me and my producers in Washington. First, I'd like to direct to Mr. Stallman, if I may. As you, all are well aware, those of us in the Pacific Northwest, all along the West Coast, experienced significant damage due to the West Coast ports, labor dispute, significant market share has been lost by our farmers, because we couldn't get access to those markets. Could you perhaps discuss some opportunities that TPP might help us in reclaiming those markets?
Well, I believe it would, just on the general principle that we have more opportunity if we complete a successful TPP. With more opportunity, that should increase the trade flows into those markets, and should help us recapture some. I mean, the fundamental issue with the transportation was there was just a delay and a shut-off of the transportation of those products, to the extent the countries went to other sources. You know, I still think that being as competitive as we are in the US, we can get them back. It's not a desirable situation, I might add, but I think that if we work at it, we can get those back. We just don't need any more shutdowns like that.
Kind of follow-up on that, do you think programs such as the MAP, Market Access Program, foreign market development, under a TPP agreement, would those be useful tools?
I think they continue to be useful, I'm not sure, depending on what the outcome of the TPP agreement would be, in terms of opening up markets, you know, to the, you know, what that would mean for those specific programs, but those specific programs have been very instrumental in improving our exports over the years.
Okay, good. I'm sorry, I was going to just interject on this as well, I mean, I think when you look at the cost of 1.7 billion in lost agricultural sales, exports out of this country, you know, certainly a trade, a TPP is going to help bring back some of that business, because I know in the fruit and vegetable world, you know, we are seeing losses in customer confidence in the ability to export because of what happened since October and March.
Actually, Mr. Gunther, I was going to turn to you next, speaking about specialty crops, so it's a good segue. My state produces a lot of them, 300 different crops in the state of Washington, and the fresh fruits, vegetables, apples, cherries, hops, you name it, we can do it. Could you maybe discuss specifically some of the opportunities in some of those crops, what a trade agreement would, might present for growers?
Well, I certainly, you know, in the apples and cherries and those types of tree fruits, you know, it's got a great advantage, opportunity to have increased access. You know, they already, you know, doing a fair amount of exports over there, but certainly this will be helpful in those areas as well.
We've talked a lot about Japan and Canada, and as it relates to dairy products, so would you, if you were able to, what instructions would you give our trade delegation as it relates to getting milk products into these countries?
Well, actually, I sit on the ag policy advisory committee for the administration, and my coaching all along has been, don't let, don't let dairy lag, because we have in the past. People are, nations are very protective of their milk supply, it's, it's one of the staples that nations want to protect. And I think that it's just that, for us as an industry that was protectionist, we found that the, opening the door a little bit was okay, the water was fine. And that would be my message to Canada, if I were a negotiator, that you need to open the door a little bit, because the water will be fine.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I yield back to balance my time.
Chairman, I yield back, Ms. Costa, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all of you, this is an important issue facing all of us in the Congress, and I really appreciate your time. I want to direct my question to Mr. Kapelman. I appreciate the work that you do on behalf of the nation's dairy farmers. New Hampshire and New England are home to many small, family-run dairy operations, right in my district, that are vulnerable to price fluctuations. And one concern that I have about the TPP is the impact on increased foreign dairy imports that we've been talking about this morning, on these small dairy farmers. So could you please elaborate further on the challenges posed to our American dairy farmers from the New Zealand exports? And then you talked about the opportunities in dairy, I think Japan and Canada, and just how, how we might balance this in terms of what the impact could be, and in particular, you know, we're talking about the TPP, I'm trying to figure out the impact here in northern New England, and so if you can give a sense on that, it'd be very helpful.
Well, there's a couple, thank you for the question, by the way, and there's, there's some things that, because I represent, as a, as a Lanta Lakes board member, I represent a lot of family-sized operations of all, you know, family-sized from 30 cows to thousands of cows. And first of all, I want to thank Congress for passing a farm bill, that we have a margin protection program, an insurance program that helps guarantee in times of, because what we're seeing now is, we've seen a precipitous drop in milk prices over the last four months, 40% drop. Now they were at all-time highs, and we're falling back into a low range, so we need a safety net, and we appreciate that. The, opening the markets really has done a lot of things for us, and getting rid of our price support programs. We're creating now products in the industry that the world wants. We used to produce products that we could sell to the government if we had to. So if everything went bad all at once, we could sell butter, we could sell powder, we could sell cheddar. Well, the world doesn't buy 80% butter, they buy 82% fat, or 82% fat butter. They don't buy non-fat dry milk, they buy skim milk powder, and they don't generally buy cheddar, although we did sell some cheddar to England, which is kind of interesting.
Well done.
Yeah, not a lot, but we got it done. But they sell a lot of Gouda, or Gouda, and other products. And so by moving to a market-oriented system, we're now creating products that the world wants, and we're now trading some of those products. We're also developing a great artisan market for a lot of, lot of, just like the microbrews have opened up the brewing industry, same thing is happening in cheeses.
We're seeing some great cheese in New Hampshire, and it's all small, small operators.
And, and that's going to do a couple things. First of all, there is, I have friends in Wisconsin who produce Farmstead cheese and are exporting it. But it also keeps some of those artisan cheeses from coming in from Europe. When you go to the dairy case now in the supermarket, you see a lot of American artisan cheeses. You don't have to just buy cheddar or mozzarella, we have a lot of opportunities now.
That's great, that's very, very helpful, thank you very much. And then this is just a general question for the group, that one concern that I've heard from many of my constituents is that in the past, the administration has not always been aggressive enough in enforcing trade agreements, and I wouldn't single out this administration, I would say administrations generally. From hardwood forest products, another big issue in my district, to aluminum extrusions, China and other countries have unfairly subsidized their exports, harming manufacturers in my state. What steps should be taken to better enforce our trade agreements and hold our trade partners accountable for violations, so that we can better protect American agricultural producers and manufacturers? And I just would open this up, maybe if you just want to go left to right, or my left to right, and that'd be great if you could start.
Well, as I referenced earlier, the first thing we need to do in trade agreements is be sure that we have enforcement provisions that, you know, are transparent, that are timely, that you can move forward with to address these situations. You know, we, we will have a lot of issues with China, and one of the moves to get them into the WTO was to make them subject to a lot of the world trading rules that exist. We probably can always do better with enforcement, but it's not always easy when you file cases, it's not always easy to win cases, and it takes a long time. But we continue, we continue to urge this administration and past administrations to do as much as they can to enforce trade agreements.
Thank you, and my time is up, so we won't have the opportunity, thank you very much.
Mr. Davis for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, panelists. I, I just wanted to address a few things about my home state of Illinois. And Mr. Kapelman, you see me behind Mr. Rousier? Okay, perfect. He's a great block here. Illinois is, my home state, is number one soybean producer in the, in the nation, and we are the number two corn-producing state. Forty-four, 44% of the grain produced in Illinois is for exports. Trade is crucial to my district. My state ranks third in ag exports, with $8.2 billion in exports. The Farm Progress Show, I'll invite you all there, is going to be held September 1st, 2nd, and 3rd in Decatur, Illinois. Would love to be able to have you there, along with the gentleman sitting behind me, which I, whom I invited yesterday. Obviously, the issues you've been addressing are extremely important to my district, but also extremely important to this country. And several of you commented in your written statements about the multiplier effect that exports have specifically on rural communities. Can you highlight some of those examples? I'll start with Mr. Gunther there, since he's had to see me more so than the rest of you lately.
I think that when you look at, look at how many jobs that, that, that we produce in terms of, you know, exports, I mean, one, two states that are, you know, very important, critical to fruits and vegetables, for instance, is California, they export nearly $20 billion in 2013, which supports almost 150,000 jobs. And then another top-producing state is Florida, where they export nearly $4.5 billion in 2013, which supports over 33,000 jobs. So when you look at the export opportunities and what they mean to the agriculture community, fruit and vegetable community in particular, I mean, it is an important tool in the toolbox. And you look at, you know, in terms of our risk management portfolio, and what things we have and don't have, based on farm bills and other product, exports is a critical part of our, our businesses, business model.
I mean, it's important to remember what you're saying is, you're not growing fruits and vegetables in urban areas, these are rural communities, and, and the ag sector is such a, such an important vital part of our rural communities that I serve, so.
That's right.
Mr. Kapelman?
Oh, yes, the multiplier effect for dairy is, I think, nothing short of miraculous. First of all, our growth in our industry will mostly be exported. We're growing our domestic consumption, but a lot of it's going overseas. And that multiplier effect of, basically, for economic activity, $2, $2.75, so every dollar of export dairy, we're generating $2.75 of economic activity in the US, but I think bigger than that is the jobs. The amount of dairy exports we've grown over the last 15 years, 140,000 incremental US jobs. And I, and we're not done growing yet, this industry can grow if we're given the tools to export.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Dr. Hill?
I think the best way I can answer your question is to use my own farming operation as an example. I have a relatively small farm, we have 350 sow, and we farm about 3,000 acres, but this, this operation has three full-time people and a couple of part-time people. I don't write checks to any of those, my accountant does that, but I've got enough scotch in me that I still want to write the checks to everybody else, so I do that. And I write about 40 checks a month, and those checks go to the local hardware stores in a town of 5,000, a hardware store in, in a town of about 300 people, welding shop, seed fertilizer, I do business with a co-op, local co-op. Those are the people that are out there that I do business with, and they're all in the rural area. And in order for us to maintain our market, we have to rely on exports, and that's why I keep going back to the fact that we need TPP, we're not going to get TPP if we don't get TPA, we have to have TPA.
Well, thank you. Mr. Stallman?
Just a couple numbers. First, every additional $1 billion in ag exports generates 7,300 jobs. Every dollar additional ag exports generates $1.127 worth of additional economic activity. I mean, you have the processing, packaging, transportation sectors. It boggles my mind that there are entities and groups of workers in this country who oppose trade agreements, when these same trade agreements are going to create jobs in transportation and for port workers. I don't understand it, but it happens.
Well, thank you all very much, very important issue being addressed today, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman's time has expired, Mr. Yoho for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen, thank you for being here, and I look forward to moving forward with TPA and TPP, as long as in, in the best interest of America, and I think as we move forward, I think we're all for balance and fair trade, and being who I am, and a Republican and a capitalist and all that, we just hope our deals a little bit better for us, I'm okay with that. But again, balance and fair trade, because as you brought up, Mr. Hill, or Dr. Hill, everything you do, the jobs it creates, and as you brought up, every job, or every time we export, it creates more, more jobs here in America. And as we move forward, as we saw in these multinational agreements, like with NAFTA, and what happened on the sugar program, and how it paid off, that we prevent those type of trade situations where it costs the American taxpayers $250 million, and that we have in place a way to recoup those losses, and that we can do that. And as we move forward with TPP, how do you see that working? To where we have those negotiations, if, if somebody violates that, is there a way to resolve that without the WTO? Can there be an agreement within the, the trade agreement? We'll start with you, Mr. Stallman.
Yes, I mean, it's anticipated that the TPP agreement would have specific dispute settlement processes, enforcement mechanisms, you know, under that agreement itself. You know, the countries still fall under, in general, the rules of the WTO, for those that are WTO members, but we should have a specific set of enforcement mechanisms in the TPP.
All right. Dr. Hill?
I don't think we can foresee every, every pitfall that occurs, but if it's a major problem, then I think we have to take it to the WTO, we have to enforce our, our rights, and some, some think that maybe we're not as aggressive enough there, probably others think that maybe we're too aggressive, but I'm not sure, but I think, I think that's, that's what we have to do.
Well, again, I think when we, we negotiate these, and when there is a violation, I think we need to be, you know, forthright and coming, and we need to do it quick, and I, I think you do need to stand strong, because you're talking about, you know, not just, you know, the trade imbalance, but you're also talking about national security and what's best for America, and I think it's time we, we take a strong stand on that. Mr. Kapelman?
Yes, I, I agree totally with my fellow testifiers here.
I mean, yes, I agree with everything, yes.
Okay. And then, one of the things that we hear a lot about is the GMO and the restrictions put on American products, whether it's the GMO or the EPA, like the neonic that are used, and the restrictions put on our products. What are your feelings on that in this negotiation? Can we negotiate strongly on those, to where we can put some kind of a pressure on the EU to accept those products with the research and development that have gone into those products, whether it's the neonic on pesticides, or the genetically-modified products that we produce, that have gone through rigorous testing, and before they get released, they've already gone through that testing, they've got years and millions, if not billions of dollars into that. How can we work with that negotiation where it's based on science, and not on, I don't know if that's the right word, but environmental McCarthyism maybe, to where they're just, they're attacking this because it's this GMO with quotes around it?
Well, I think in the case of TPP, a lot of that has, has occurred, and I think we've made significant progress. With, with TTIP, I'm not as convinced that we'll, we'll ever get the Europeans to back off the issues, as you pointed out, GMO. I don't think they've negotiated in good faith to this point, that's why I'm skeptical that TTIP will, will see the light of day in the, at least in the near future. TPP, though, can. TPP, though, can.
Okay. Anybody else have a different opinion or comment?
No, same opinion. We just have to address those in the agreements themselves. I would concur that TTIP is going to be much more problematic in that regard. You know, I get to meet with the negotiators from other countries, including the EU negotiators. They come over and tell me all the things they're not going to be able to do in this negotiation related to agriculture, and I point out to them, well, if there's not going to be anything changed, then why should we be supportive of it?
You know, and I like that, because, don't tell me what you can't do, tell me what we can do so we can do that. And I appreciate you being forthright on that, and I thank you for your time, and Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Chairman, I yield back. Mr. Rousier for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think maybe perhaps I'm the last witness, I'm not, pardon me, last member. Maybe one more. Anyhow, here at the very end, I can, I can assure you, I think the record's going to show that all of you are in support of TPA and, and, and trade agreements in, in general. I want to focus my line of questions, and just a couple of them, to Dr. Hill. I have a very strong pork-producing district in southeastern North Carolina. Obviously, pork is a critically important commodity to the state of North Carolina and to the country as a whole. And it occurs to me that we've had a significant amount of growth in exports, probably since the late 1990s, directly related to the opening of new markets, and I thought maybe it might be instructive for the committee and others in the public to, to have a good sense of that history. Can you provide that?
Yeah, well, up until about 1992, 93, we, the United States was a net importer of pork. And as we developed these free trade agreements and started opening markets, we have successfully increased the amount of pork that we've exported every year but one, year over year. And, and last year was, was, volume was down slightly. Value was, was higher than 2013. But we export approximately 24% of all the, the muscle meat and another roughly 3% of variety meats, which would include the offal and everything that I mentioned before, which that variety meat adds significantly to the, the value of the pig that eventually goes back to the producer. And as you said, North Carolina is, of course, a, you know, they have the largest number of sow, and it's obviously very important. And now with, with Smithfield having that inroad into China, you know, it's extremely important for them. And, you know, China is one of those countries that we think eventually may join, want to join the TPP.
You know, we've been told that TPP will create significant business opportunities across the board for the pork industry in particular, for the state of North Carolina. Has there been any economic analysis in terms of jobs created? My district, you know, is one of those districts that has a, has a, an above-average unemployment rate, and pork industry is critical to my district, so any, any new jobs we can create as it relates to this trade agreement, I'd be most interested in.
Yeah, there, there absolutely has. Dr. Dermot Hayes, who is an economist, ag economist at Iowa State University, has done a study, and his predictions are that if we implement TPP, that it'll create, just in the pork sector, another 10,000 jobs, full-time jobs.
Any other comments that you'd like to have in the last 1 minute and 49 seconds? This is your opportunity.
We need TPA.
I thought you were going to say that. I yield back my time, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, I yield back. G.T. Thompson for five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. More than happy to play cleanup here. Thank you for hosting this hearing. Gentlemen, great to see you. Thanks for being here. Appreciate what you do here in the hearing room and what you do back home. Dr. Hill, I mean, I just wanted, I wanted to follow up on what my colleague was talking about. It seems, would, would you agree then that, you know, the pork industry, the hog industry, where it was, that the fact of responding to export demand and opportunity in the 90s really has stimulated growth in, in the hog industry and, quite frankly, created jobs?
Yeah, it absolutely has. And of course, you know, it, it not only helps the pork industry, but it helps the corn producers, it helps the soybean producers and building all that.
I think that's a great point that's missed, because sometimes we think about trade, about just meeting the needs of current workers, current agricultures, current farmers, ranchers. And the fact is that it seems like that these trade agreements have really have stimulated future growth as well. I want to, you had referenced a, a Dr. Hayes from the Iowa State University in your testimony, and you, you made reference to him with something else he had said in the previous line of questioning. You had the comments about the TPP, Dr. Hayes said, comments that the TPP may be the, the most important commercial opportunity ever for U.S. pork producers. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, you know, the countries that are represented, the 12 countries represented in TPP account for about 40% of the global market, and so it, it's going to open up a lot of opportunities. You know, we, we exported about $2 billion of product to Japan. We don't know exactly, we, depends on what happens with the tariffs and everything, but we, we expect that that market can be significantly increased. We expect Vietnam, Australia also. And if China comes in eventually, we look for China to be a huge market. China, of course, is, you know, produces more pork than just about the rest of the world, but they have a, an increasing population and developing a, a middle class that wants that protein.
Right. Dr. Or, Mr. Kapelman, keeping agriculture products moving now demands not only work by our trade agencies such as USTR and FAS, but also regulators, given that often countries are looking for assurances about the safety of the products we're shipping. Now, for your business and, and the dairy business specifically, is, is this a process that works, and are our regulators sufficiently prioritizing trade issues?
You know, thank you for the question. It's because in dairy, the rapid growth in trade is new. We are not staffed up, you know, new, I say 10 years old, right? So we've had 10 years to figure this out, but we're not staffed up to meet the needs that we have to step up to, to certify our products to some of these countries. For instance, with Chile, we had the agreement made, but then they said, okay, great, are your plants certified? We need to get your plants certified. And to the FDA, it's like, wow, you know, we're not staffed for that yet. So we, that, that whole FDA staffing and, and for us, it's, a lot of it's plant certification that we are certified to export, that we're not there yet.
Yeah. And follow up, and I heard this asked, just when, I apologize, I was coming in late, but I heard this being asked to another member of the panel, something similar, and I want to, Mr. Kapelman, I want to see if you'd respond to this. Can you please discuss the importance to U.S. agriculture of preventing restrictions on the use of the generic food names?
You know, that's a, that's an interesting concept. Of course, TTIP and, and Europe is front and center in that, and they think that, that a lot of their products, they should have rights to those products. And unfortunately, for them, a lot of our cheesemakers came from Europe, and we're making the cheeses that they made three or four generations ago, and we've not only been manufacturing them, we've been promoting them, we've been marketing them, we've been building the market for those categories of cheese. So we've been building the global market, and now they want to take that back. Well, I don't think Parma can make enough Parmesan to feed the world. So, so we absolutely need to stand firm in those GIs.
Very good. Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman, I yield back. Chairman, thank you this morning for coming and visiting with us and getting on the record a couple things. One, your clear support for TPA and why that's necessary in order to get these broader agreements done. The fact you're in the record that you do have access to our negotiators as well as negotiators on the other side of the, of these deals, and trying to help everybody understand what's in the best interest of the, of the entire agreement, and that you all reserve the right to support or not support the ultimate trade agreements based on the impact that you see has not only your particular industry, but also the broader impacts that are there. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize that today is National Agricultural Day, and so having this hearing on a, on an impact, on a piece of, of the agricultural economy that's, that's vital to everyone is, is an impetus. I'd like to say I'd planned this months ago, that we would have trade discussed on, on National Agriculture Day, but the, the level of exports, the jobs created, the wealth created, and the improvement in, in the U.S. economy that is everything associated with exporting things that we grow that other people want to eat or wear is, is important. So with that, I think I probably have some official announcement. Before adjourn, nope, ranking member left. Under the Rules of Committee, the record of today's hearing, where it may open for 10 calories a day, should receive additional material, supplemental written responses from the witnesses to any questions posed by a member. This hearing on the community agriculture is adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.